Are we on, David?
We are on.
Okay. Good evening, everybody, and welcome. This is a virtual meeting, Dearborn Public Schools' regular scheduled meeting of April 13th, 2020. I will call this meeting to order. We'll call, Madam Secretary, please.
Mary Lane, present. Roxanne McDonald.
Here.
Michael Mead.
Present.
Adal Mosse.
Here.
Mary Petlicoff.
Here.
James Thorpe.
Here.
President Barry.
Here. Next item, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Nadine Seklawi, 9th grader at Dearborn High School, and Naveen Seklawi, 7th grader at STEM, will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And you'll be getting your certificates in the mail. All right, next item, please.
Superintendent's update. Agenda items. A. Retirements.
So, good evening, everyone. Before I go on to retirements, I just want to make an announcement that on top of the current COVID-19 crisis, we also have the potential for a windstorm and power outages this evening. We do have a backup put in place just in case power were to go down from the Administrative Service Center, but just in case there may be a delay if that were to occur. In talking to President Barry, my understanding is the real damaging winds have passed, so hopefully we're, we have some good fortune with this. But we do have backup ready just in case. So just wanted to make that announcement. So stick around. If something were to happen, we'll try to get back up and running right away. Before I go on to that, I have a second item. I'd like to just observe a moment of silence on behalf of all those who have passed as a result of COVID-19, including Representative Isaac Robinson, who we know in Dearborn has been very supportive within the community. If we could just observe a moment of silence, please. We have some good fortune with this. But we do have back- Thank you, everyone. Our thoughts and prayers goes out to all of those who are dealing with that and their families. So I'll go on to agenda items, retirements. We have Ms. Ruth Bankhead, 33 and 1/2 years of service. I got to work with her closely when I was the Director of Human Resources. We have Shawn Cornea with 21 years of service. Kelly Herrick, 30 years of service. Barbara Nushinwander with 19 years of service. Vicky Pesch with over 27 years of service. And I have Lila Salami with over 39 years of service. If we could extend our appreciation to all those who are retiring and thank them for their years of service and congratulations. At some point in time, they will get a handwritten note from me. It may be delayed a little right now, but we do thank all of them. If we could just give a round of applause or I'll do it here. Thank you.
Next item, please.
Non-agenda items. A. COVID-19 update.
So just over a month ago, on March 9, 2020, we were physically in the Frank Franchi Board Room conducting our normal business. At that meeting, we did address the COVID-19 crisis with videos and a statement. However, at that time, we could not have predicted that only two days later, the district would be working through a situation that required us to close Whitmore Bowls. March 11 was an extremely intensive day for me and my team, along with the Board of Education, staff, and parents and students at Whitmore Bowls, as we learned that a staff member was exposed to one of the, who was exposed to one of the first two positive COVID-19 tests in the state of Michigan. We are grateful that the staff member who would also test positive and that staff member's relative, who the staff member was exposed to, are doing very well. I've actually spoken to that individual on several occasions, so that's good news. By the end of the week, the governor closed down all schools in Michigan for a three-week period effective March 16. I want to thank several individuals for their outstanding support during the time of crisis. I first want to thank our entire crisis team and the extended cabinet for their support as events transpired during that week and continue to transpire to date. With regard to Whitmore Bowls situation, a special thank you to Principal Christie Waddell, Engineer Mike Low, Nurse Carrie Khan, the entire Whitmore Bowl staff, my executive cabinet, the Wayne County Health Department, State Superintendent, Governor's Office, HFC College President Cavalluna, Police Chief Haddad, Fire Chief Murray, the Mayor's Office, and City Council. I feel blessed, extremely blessed, to work with a very supportive Board of Education. And I want to especially thank President Barry for his outstanding leadership as we dealt with the crisis during those initial days and as we continue to deal with the crisis up until this point in time. Mr. Barry provides a great deal of support and direction in his role as president on behalf of the board. I also want to thank our outstanding entire Board of Education, trustees Dr. Mead, Thorpe, Petlicoff, Lane, Mosse, and McDonald. They were all very supportive on March 11 and have been ever since. I'm so proud of our school community as we always come together in a time of crisis. I also want to thank our entire school district, which includes our, our teachers, who have been really knocking it out of the park, so to speak, by supporting their students via online learning and other methods. I've received outstanding notes, videos, comments, and posts, posts and examples of wonderful learning. I know a lot of the trustees have received that as well. In addition, thank you to Jeff Murphy, Josh Bane, our entire Food Service Department, along with Nephila Hyder and the PTA volunteers as we started to distribute meals right away on Tuesday, March 17, just days after the closure. We are currently distributing over 60,000 meals per week to students in the community. In addition, Mr. Troy Patterson, the Instructional Department, Executive Directors Chokel, Peterson, Salee, Farage, and K-12 Consultant Dr. Grover, I want to thank them for implementing an online learning process for our students just days, literally days after the closure. In fact, I remember speaking to Director Patterson, saying, "We may have a few weeks," and then just one day before the closure, I said, "Well, those few weeks have just changed. We need to be ready tomorrow." And we were. We distributed over 4,000 Chromebooks the week following the closures. I want to thank the principals, along with the support staff, for getting right on top of that. In addition, we put together a social-emotional hotline to provide support to our students. I would like to thank our operations staff, support staff, cabinet members, principals and administrators, along with our union heads for their great leadership and support throughout the crisis. Our crisis team continues to meet twice weekly via Google Hangouts, and we continue to operate and provide support to our students via distance learning. I further want to thank David Mustin, Mista Malikazee, and Tom Wall, members of the Executive Cabinet, who in addition to the other executives that I've mentioned, have been working tirelessly to support our district as we deal with the current international crisis. The Superintendent Department and Communications Department also deserve a shout-out as a result of their great media posts, videos, and communication with parents and the community. Although we physically closed the district down, including the central office, during the week of March 22, as we shortly thereafter learned of the Governor's Shelter in place order, we continue to remain open via electronic communication to support students and families. The contact information includes the following, which will go up on the screen right now. General information, 313-827-3006, or email communications@dearbornschools.org. Social-emotional hotline, 313-827-8500, or email DSS@dearbornschools.org. Text support, 313-827-8400. Human Resources and Student Services, 313-827-3068. And Special Education, 313-827-7050. On April 2, the governor announced that schools in Michigan will be closed for the remainder of the 2019 school year. We applaud the decision by the governor to ensure the safety of all Michigan students as we continue to work toward the slowing of the spread of the COVID-19 virus. To summarize the Governor's official 17-page order, here are a few key points. All public schools' buildings will be closed for the remainder of the 1920 school year. Seniors will be allowed to graduate, and students will move to the next grade, assuming they are on track to graduate, have met standards, and/or will show they have met standards over the next several weeks via online learning or other methods here. Assessments are waived, SAT, PSAT, M-Step. Students who were scheduled to take the SAT this spring will have an opportunity to take the SAT, which may occur in the fall. Food distribution programs will absolutely continue. All school districts must develop what we call a continuity of learning plan for continued online distance learning. The state will continue to provide school aid payments, allowing districts to pay staff regular wages, salary, and benefits for the remainder of the school year. A key component of the Governor's order is that students need to participate in distance learning or other forms of continued learning provided by the district. Our administrative team has already started developing a continuity of learning plan that will be submitted to our local intermediate school district, ISD, as required by the Governor's order. Approval by the ISD will ensure the remainder of the school year will count as instruction for the district and that we will continue to receive state funding. We know our seniors have many questions about how the rest of the school year will look. We continue to have discussions with regard to how we will honor our graduation class of 2020. I've met with the Superintendent Student Advisory Council to seek further input and will continue discussions with the board. We will continue to seek input from the students, parents, and the staff. It is true that our buildings are closed. Students are not in their classrooms. Auditoriums are silent, and stadiums are empty. The physical part of our year has ended, but we cannot let learning end. We are a strong and resourceful community, and I'm so very proud to see how we have come together to support each other through this very difficult time. We know there are community members and Dearborn School staff members who have lost loved ones due to the COVID-19 virus. Again, on behalf of our entire district, I want to express our most sincere condolences to those families during this very difficult time. Please know that we all send our love, our support, and our prayers. Of course, we also want to take a moment to recognize and extend our deepest appreciation and support to all the healthcare workers and first responders who are in the trenches each and every day, working with those individuals who have tested positive for COVID-19. They are very heroic as they do their job and care for those in need under extremely tough and stressful circumstances. Besides the isolation, it is the uncertainty that has added to the difficulty of this ordeal. The emotions that come with these uncertainties are real and can begin to erode our ability to see light at the end of the tunnel. Yet, in the midst of this uncertainty, we can find acts of bravery and inspiration from thousands of people who continue to do their job each and every day. These unsung heroes have provided us with an emotion even stronger than the fear brought on by uncertainty. They have given us hope. Hope that we will persevere and see our way through this crisis. Hope that despite the staggering numbers of those infected with the virus, there will be even greater numbers who will be called survivors. Hope that as a community, we will come together and become stronger once this is over. Humans have an instinct for survival, and we as Americans have a unique determination to persevere and overcome. When hope becomes the fuel to inspire, to endure, to overcome, then hope becomes more than just a vision for the future. It becomes the actions that lead to a successful future. I encourage all of us to continue to be hopeful. Thank you.
Very well said, Dr. Maleko. Thank you. I'm sure we all share your thoughts. Very much appreciated. Next item, please.
President Barry, may I ask a question?
Yes, please. Trustee Lane?
I would like to say thank you also to Dr. Maleko because he's worked almost 24/7. I know he's probably dreaming COVID dreams. He's always thinking about it. And you two have been a champion, Glenn, and, and I sincerely thank you for everything that you've done for all the families in Dearborn. But I would like to, to say also that if anyone watching this video knows of community members that are offline or need assistance, they should please pass on the information that you gave about the hotlines. And then I'd like to ask this question, Dr. Maleko. It's, it seems pretty obvious to me, but I, I think that we should state it here. We will start making plans to reopen, and I'm sure that those, the reopening will be in accordance with public health guidelines and recommendations. And I'm assuming that we'll follow the lead of the state, and I know that the states are now forming some coalitions. I know there's regional coalitions of states on the West Coast and on the East Coast, so I assume that we will be doing that as well. Yes, no?
Thank you. Yes, we've already been in discussions. And in fact, one of the meetings I've had is with State Superintendent Dr. Rice on a conference just last Friday. So we will, yeah, absolutely follow those recommendations. And we have already had that on the agenda with our crisis team and our entire cabinet and general administrators, all principals in the district. We've opened discussions on that. Again, thank you as well.
Trustee Lane?
That being said, when I was thinking about what things are we going to have to grapple with in the future, we know right now that there is an expectation that there's going to be some increased domestic violence, some increases of probably of child abuse. People's nerves are very frayed. People are having to do two jobs, being a teacher, a parent, and maybe their regular job. But, so besides cyber bullying, many of the bad behaviors that we experience in, we've experienced in the past, I was thinking that perhaps the Policy Committee or the district as a whole start thinking about future student conduct issues. I'd like us to think about this. One thing that we may have to add to our student code of conduct would be any false reports or health threats, hacking online or zooming, there's zoom bombing of classes that's gone on. So I'm just anticipating that those might be things that we see. I hope not, because like other sanctionable behavior, Dearborn schools, I think, will take action. But I would just ask people to think about that, particularly the Policy Committee.
Thank you for those comments. Next item, please.
Budget. Tom Wall?
Good evening, everybody. Dr. Maleko, President Barry, and members of the Board of Education. We are living in unprecedented times with the current restrictions and orders we are living in. I'll take a few minutes and update you on the current year forecast and next year. We've been working hard to keep up-to-date information as much as possible to the students, staff, and parents in our community. It has not been easy, as requirements were under changed quickly and several times a week. I'd like to thank all the staff and parents as they are patient with us, as we continue to work hard and determine the best course of action for students who we miss seeing on a daily basis. Current operations in the district have been going well. We continue to pay all employees, whether working or not, and will continue to be paid their normal profile hours through the Governor's Shelter-in-Place Executive Order through April 30. Some have been working from home in the district as essential workers, and some in the buildings on a daily basis. We have been incurring additional costs directly related to the coronavirus 19 since the school shutdown. We have been tracking these costs, and they do include overtime, equipment loaned out to students, cleaning supplies, information and communication costs, closing of playgrounds, and changing how we operate for these last past four weeks. The estimated costs on these are roughly around $3.2 million as of date. Please remember that we are the third-largest district in Michigan, and we are serving 20,600 students and their families. This represents roughly about a 1.4% increase in our general fund. Our operation surplus this year was basically break even, and we had a surplus during our budget update of roughly $2 million, which we were transferring to the Building and Site Fund for capital needs. In addition, we are still operating, we are operating differently and have incurred some savings from parts of the budget that have come in much lower or have yet to be determined. Some examples of this are the complete shutdown of transportation of students, spring athletics being canceled, we had a very mild winter, and the inability to have any construction projects continue. Many of these items, with discussions with vendors, unions, outside agencies, and administration, determine how to reconcile these options. We are working hard to bring clarity for all those involved. Overall, our current year will most likely generate a mild surplus, which will be carried forward into next year for spending. And these, the example of this is last board meeting, we approved the emergency notification system increase, and a cost of roughly $3 million that would have started this past week will now be charged to next year's budget. Now, looking forward, the CARES Act from the federal government is now moving towards the states for funding. We don't know how the state of Michigan will handle this just yet, but they are required to allocate it to the schools based on the Title I funding. And at least 90% must be sent to the schools. Michigan's portion is roughly about $390 million, which is strongly recommended not to be used for recurring expenditures such as salaries and benefits. We'll have to wait to see how the state handles this. The other serious thing to consider is the funding for school aid. Back in January, it looked very promising, and the Governor's Plan had us receiving about 120-per-pupil increase. Let me share some information on school funding as a reminder. I have a graph which will be shown later, but roughly 43.7% comes from sales tax, 19.4% from income tax, and 13.4% from property tax, which all could be seriously impacted from our current economy being shut down appropriately for the coronavirus impact on our state. Next year's projections by most economists feel there will be a considerable impact where they have estimated flat to negative foundational ounces next year. If the economy does go into recession, it may last for several years and will impact our future budgets for quite some time. The impact to our budget, compounded by our union contracts, which have a scheduled 2% increase and a half percent off-schedule payment, but the staff earnestly deserve this, and our building infrastructure is in serious need of improvements, they have to be addressed with additional funding from the general fund. The budget discussions going forward will have to balance all of these discussions and determine how to have a balanced budget at some point in the future. Not all is doom and gloom. Our early enrollment forecasts are strong. Our governor understands the impact and the importance of our K-12 education, and our fund balance is at 15%, which gives us some options for the upcoming year to get us through this unexpected issue. This completes the financial update, and I'll answer any questions.
Trustee Lane, do you have any questions?
I did want to point out to people that we have one item on the agenda, number six, which is the cleaning of just one building that had, that we were concerned had COVID or had the coronavirus in the building. And the cost for cleaning one building is just a couple dollars, under $40,000. So I just want people to understand that the, the impact on the district is massive and unpredictable.
Thank you. Trustee McDonald, do you have any questions for Mr. Walls?
Mine was already answered by his presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Mead, do you have any questions for Mr. Walls?
No questions. Just really appreciate the report. It looks into the future as well as the present.
Thank you. Trustee Mosse, any questions? Mr. Walls?
No. Thanks to Mr. Wall as well. Thank you.
Trustee Petlicoff?
Yeah, I have a question, something that I had, had a conversation with a couple of my colleagues earlier about, and a concern that I shared with Dr. Maleko. We anticipate that there might be some hesitancy with students coming back into the buildings in the beginning if things are still unsettled with the pandemic news that is out there. And we know that we don't get paid our allowance if we don't have a 75% population in the buildings. Has there been any more conversation from the state about relaxing that when we start back? Or are they anticipating that everybody is just going to go back to the way things were immediately?
So I can comment a little, just because I've had several meetings with Dr. Rice. Yeah, they are anticipating it will be much different, and they're not exactly sure, but they are trying to get us to prepare for a difference. As far as funding goes, we don't really have any word, other than kind of what Mr. Wall had forecast, is we need to be cautious. But as students enter the buildings, you know, we have to start looking at potentials of social distancing and all those things, and possibly are there districts that may open and then have to close again because of COVID-19. So these are all considerations, and we're being warned as superintendents. And fortunate, I'm on some good organizations, and I have a good relationship with Dr. Rice to get some of that information. But that's some of his, you know, looking into the crystal ball. Unfortunately, we don't know exactly what will happen, but we do have to plan for the unexpected. And so there are conversations happening in those areas. Has there been any official word? No, there hasn't.
What I hope is that the conversation is filtering over to the legislature, because they're the ones who have that funding control. And the state Board of Education might understand and recognize it, but Lansing might be not quite up to speed on those kinds of issues until it hits us all. And I just want to make sure that when it comes time that we send the bill in, that we're not going to be dinged unfairly, and that they've already given thought to all those other, out of our control. It's, it's no different than a snow day or anything else, where we, we, this is something beyond our ability to predict. And I want to make sure that we have this conversation before, not after, when we have to deal with the financial fallout of it. So that would be my question.
Sure. And I could say our organizations, like the Wayne County Superintendent Association, the State Superintendent, you're going to have MASB, we're all advocating. And I think that's exactly why, if you saw under the Governor's Order, it was specific in a lot of those areas. It did address those areas about 75%. So the hope would be that this is a short-term order, that the legislature, like you said, would, would actually enact that in any kind of future budgetary applications. So absolutely. One positive is that the order does require us to, all the costs that Mr. Wall mentioned of just to date of the COVID-19 response, we are required to submit that in the document of the continuity of learning plan that I mentioned earlier during my commentary. So there actually, the governor was looking for us to add that. I can tell you, though, it's part of it is because the Governor's Office has been in contact with those organizations, like the Tri-County Alliance is another one. And so we have good groups that are advocating. So we will contend to do that for sure. I'd encourage all of you through the MASB as well to advocate that way.
Thank you. Trustee Thorpe, do you have a question for Mr. Walls?
It's actually more to piggyback on what Trustee Petlicoff just said. You heard Mr. Wall mention that the largest part of our budget comes from sales tax. And what I've already done, and we've talked about it before at a board level, we've all asked members of the community to reach out to the legislators and let them know that we see the wave coming. What can we do to try to mitigate it? If we can look at different ways that we can fund school, so that we're not going to possibly run into a budget problem as we move into the next school year.
Okay, great. Dr. Maleko, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I mean, I guess the only thing I can add, and I'll let Mr. Wall add if he wants to, but that's where that finance collaborative had said, "We really do need to change the way we fund school districts, weighted formulas of those in need." Like right now, we're seeing, I'll just use the Chromebooks or online access. We know some kids have and some don't. And so that's why it's really going to force us to look at the funding formula in a different manner, in the big picture. But, so I appreciate that comment, Mr. Thorpe. And I don't know if, or Trustee Thorpe, if Mr. Wall had anything to add to that.
Just that it's, it's a long-term solution. It's not something we have to fix the boat within three months. We're going to have to do a lot more long-term planning as we get through these waves of funding and cost. So don't overreact, and we'll just keep working at it until we get the picture right.
Mr. Walls, thank you for that report. And we, all of us, we appreciate your work, and we understand that we're in good position with you at the helm moving forward. So you're very well appreciated. Next item, please.
I wanted to make a comment also, President Barry. Not only can- Not only can is is planning difficult, but part of the reason planning is difficult is because it's a novel coronavirus. And what we thought in the beginning has turned out to be incorrect. I mean, a couple of weeks ago, everybody was washing off all their vegetables. Now, we're told that it lives on paper for a couple of hours, then we're told it lives on plastic for longer. So in other words, it makes planning be very hesitant and cautious. And I hope that everyone, when they're thinking of the ways that we're dealing with this, when we get back to reentry, will probably have to do it slowly and cautiously, and all of us will have to plan really carefully, and then always with the thought in our mind that we might have to stop things and move back a step. So it makes everything very difficult, and I hope that people will consider that when they're critiquing any of us, and that we consider that when we're we're all trying the best that we can. And people have to understand that, I believe. We're dealing with something that none of us ever was taught how to deal with this.
Thank you. Next item.
Recognition and acknowledgements, commendations.
We're still on agenda items. Dr. Maleko, census?
Census, yeah. I just that's just a quick reminder for people to fill out the census report. We've been promoting it through the district, and so just wanted to remind people to go on the website or to fill it out. They believe there's a link, and then they're going to start going door-to-door. And Trustee Lane, this may have been a late add to, I put it in my commentary as others, so I apologize.
Yeah, I see. So I have a I'm working off a print copy, which might have been the earlier agenda. So President Barry, just let me know if I missed something else.
We'll work together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I comment something on the census, please?
Trustee Moser, please.
Yes, just on the census, just for people, I'm holding to the screen, what I received and as as the reminder to fill out the census. It was very easy, only took me about three minutes to fill out. The web application is very well-designed, and it doesn't take you that much time. I don't think it took me three minutes, probably won't take you three minutes either. So my 2020census.gov, if you lost the card, they send, I actually got two. So if you don't fill out the card, then you'll have somebody knocking on your door. So given the current circumstances, it's and since you're staying at home the whole time, it's best to fill it out. As we mentioned before, that census is so important, so crucial for our state, everybody to be counted. It doesn't matter how they live here in the United States, they should be counted. So make sure that you fill out the survey, and you remind your friends and family to fill it out as well. Thank you.
Trustee Moser, that's really important, and I know you're hinting to it, but I'd just like to say straight out, it does not matter if someone is here with an immigration document or not. Every person in the United States should fill it out, whether they have citizenship, a green card, or even if they have no documents.
Correct. And that question is not being asked on the census.
No, there's no question about citizenship.
I'm just asking you about, and it's completely confidential. So I encourage everybody to go out, and the the key that they give you is on the card. So you just have to put in the PIN, and then they ask you all of those questions.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to next item is Arab American Heritage Month. Mr. David Mussonen.
Thank you very much, President Barry. So on Monday, June 25th of 2018, this board passed a resolution to recognize Arab American Heritage Month every April. Just like take a moment to read that resolution that was passed by the board in 2018. Whereas, for over a century, Arab Americans have been making valuable contributions to virtually every aspect of American society, in medicine, law, business, technology, government, and culture. And whereas, since migrating to America, men and women of Arab descent have shared their rich culture and traditions with neighbors and friends, while also setting fine examples of model citizens and public servants. And whereas, they brought with them to America their resilient family values, strong work ethic, dedication to education, and diversity in faith and creed that have added strength to our great democracy. And whereas, Arab Americans have also enriched our society by sharing in the opportunistic American spirit that makes our nation free and prosperous. And whereas, the history of Arab Americans in American life often remain neglected or defaced by misunderstanding, bigotry, and anti-Arab hate in forms of crimes and speech. And whereas, Arab American issues such as civil rights abuses, harmful stereotyping, and bullying must be combated in forms of education and awareness. And whereas, they join all Americans in the desire to see a peaceful and diverse society, where every individual is treated equally and feels safe. And whereas, the incredible contributions and heritage of Arab Americans have helped us build a better nation. And now, therefore, for these reasons and many others, be it resolved that the Dearborn Public Schools Board of Education celebrate the contributions Arab Americans have made to society, and do hereby claim April of each year to be National Arab American Heritage Month in Dearborn. This will start in April of 2019 and encourage all residents to join us in this special observance.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mussonen. Dr. Maleko, do you have anything to add to the report?
Yeah, again, I appreciate Mr. Mussonen reading that. And the last thing I just want to add is just, you know, to our students out there who are feeling the pain of not having the end of the year, we're with you, we're going to stick with you. And I just want to let our parents and community members, you know, to stay safe, stay home, stay home. Right now, we need to do our part, and that's why we're having this meeting where everyone's at home, other than, you know, David and Tom, and we're maintaining our social distance. So so very important, we need to save those first responders and medical professionals by staying home, and that's the part that we can do right now at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Secretary, next item, please.
Are we at recognition and acknowledgements?
Yes, we are.
Commandations. Is anyone reading commendations?
That's that would be me again, reading commendations. Really, this time of year, and given all that we've gone through this past month, I think we could probably read a commendations for just about every staff member and every parent, every student who have really gone above and beyond to keep our school district. As Dr. Maleko has been saying, our buildings are closed, but the learning continues. With that being said, we do have some very specific commendations for this month, and I'm sure the list will grow for next month. So starting off with some district commendations. Commendations to staff at all levels for their assistance during the primary election. Do you remember that? It happened early in March. Everything operated very well due to the outstanding leadership exhibited by staff at all levels, including principals, who moved their polling locations to provide additional security. In addition, commendations to some specific groups. First of all, Chief Ronald Haddad and the Dearborn Police Department for their visible presence all over the district. City Clerk George Deraney for his great communication with schools, and his staff for working with all of our schools. New Safety and Security Supervisor, Mr. John Leach, for taking the lead on security issues in our schools. Commendations to district staff, especially Shannon Peterson. At the request of State Representative Abdullah Hamood, Ms. Peterson spearheaded an effort to collect science lab goggles and medical gloves from our school buildings to help protect medical staff dealing with the coronavirus. The district donated 776 goggles and four cases of gloves to Beaumont Hospital. And finally, at the high school level, this is the time of year where we start to hear about many scholarships, students who are being accepted to different universities across our country, really, and several scholarships. And I know there are many scholarships that are still out there. Lot of them, the due dates have been extended. So through our Education Foundation, for example, is one. I know our three high schools, the social workers do a scholarship there, and I know that deadline has been extended as well. Those can be found on our district website. Tonight, we'd just like to congratulate the 17 students who recently received the Otto J. Rowan Scholarship. The scholarships administered by the Dearborn Rotary Foundation are for $2,000 each and are given to students interested in pursuing vocational fields and who are recommended by their vocational instructors. So we want to congratulate them and remind all of our students that, you know, there are a lot of these $500, $1,000, $2,000 scholarships out there. Take advantage of them. They really add up, and they really can make a difference. That is all for commendations, so thank you very much.
I would imagine you're not going for next, not going too far. Next item, please.
Acknowledgement of donations.
Yeah, I we have several donations, once again, by the coming from the Education Foundation. Donation of $96.39 has been offered to Henry Ford Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for content and language objectives. A donation of $2,000 has been offered to McCullough Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for interactive projector and whiteboard. A donation of $1,000 has been offered to Lori Elementary School from the by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for Corg Littlebits synth kits, which are to promote the STEAM program. And a donation of $3,000 has been offered to Dearborn High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for equipment for the fitness room. That is all for our donations.
Thank you very much. Madam Secretary, next item, please.
Approval of minutes, approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meetings. Executive Session Closed Devaluation, March 9, 2020. Board Report 19108. Policy Committee Meeting, March 9, 2020. Board Report 19109. Regular P-12 Meeting, March 9, 2020. Board Report 19110. Recommended Action, make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So.
We have them. The motion was moved by trustee Moser and supported by trustee Thorpe. I'm going to go through my list here to see if there's any questions or corrections. Trustee Lane?
Yes, I would like to have added my comments. I was telephonically on the meeting, and at the 35th minute, 27th second of Video Four, I commented on how easy it was absentee voting, and I was trying to encourage everyone to vote on at the March 10th primary election. I also urged people at that time to think when they were voting about healthcare, universal healthcare for all persons in the United States, because I noted that the coronavirus showed or might show how important it is for everyone to be able to access healthcare, that it should be a universal human right. So I would like to have that comment added.
Thank you. Trustee McDonald?
None.
Okay, trustee Mead?
Yes, we're approving the minutes.
Do you have any questions or corrections? Thank you, sir. Trustee Moser?
No questions.
Trustee Petrov?
No, I had already emailed mine in.
Nothing for me.
Okay, I guess as amended, we will take a roll call vote.
Okay, Lane, yes. McDonald, yes. Mead?
Yes.
Trustee Moser?
Yes, sorry.
Petrov?
Yes.
Thorpe?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes, please attach a unanimous roll call vote to the motion. Next, please.
Special reports, none.